Alright everyone, if I could just grab your attention, can everyone hear me?
No.
Yes, no?
Not very well.
Now?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to welcome you to the 2019 United Medical Town Hall Meeting. My name is Rachah Shaw. For those of you who do not know me, I'm the Director of Billing. Our goal for the meeting today is to increase communication and transparency within our organization. For those of you who have not been to a Town Hall Meeting, we focus on who we are as a company, companies. I know we have the clinics here today and ASC as well, so you'll receive some information about your groups also. We also talk about the changes that we need to make in order for us to grow. The leadership team provides departmental updates, which are going to be in our presentation today. Keep in mind that those of you who did fill out the survey prior to the meeting, we will address some of your questions within the presentation. So just look out for those. If you have further questions, we are going to have a Q&amp;A at the end of our meeting today, so you will have an opportunity to ask any additional questions or follow-up questions you may have. So we're going to start today actually with the award ceremony. So I'm going to ask Susan to come up and we'll get started.
I almost said "good morning," but it's actually afternoon, so good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming. Kamal Erkin is the person behind this all. Welcome. So I always have the pleasure of announcing the awards, which I really do enjoy doing. And we'd like to start with Christiana Institute of Advanced Surgery. Today, we have four individuals that have been with Christiana Institute of Advanced Surgery, I'm just going to go with Kriyas from now on, for more than 10 years. So I would like to...
So, is Dr. Irgan here yet? I didn't see him.
Dr. Irgan?
Okay. I was going to ask him to join me, but that's fine.
Oh, okay. Is he, so he's not here yet?
No. We can start with him.
So, I would like to please ask Dr. Michael Peters to come up and accept his award. Thank you so much.
We can ask Sydney to take in order of that.
Okay. That's me, that's my idea. So, she'll have to show us the hand. So, United Medical has someone who has been with us for 10 years, Nikki LaShome. Nikki works in business development and she's also was instrumental in putting together our prezzi today. And she had to hike really far to get up to the stage. And we also have five-year awards for those who have been with us for five years. I'd like to honor Cheryl Valentine. Cheryl is one of our trainers in the Business Development Department. And from our Care Coordination Department, Ben Coon. Ben was actually with United Medical before the Care Coordination Department was fully And our next five-year awardee, would it be an awardee? Is James Ko. James has been with us seven, five years. James is at American Surgery Center. Our next five-year award, is it awardee? Award...
Recipient.
Jessica is also from American Surgery Center. And our last, sorry, our last five-year award recipient is Ashley Hudson. So our next award is something new that we put into place this year for this Town Hall Meeting. What we're trying to do, or what we want to do, is honor those who have exhibited one of our core values. These are United Medical's core values: excellence, integrity, partnership, innovation, and leadership. So I am really excited to give out these awards. They're important to the company and the growth of our company and how well we continue to do. So, for partnership, I actually have three individuals who have worked together in partnership and have done an amazing job with the development of our Smyrna office, and that is Hazel Is Devin not here?
Will we report?
Yep. Is Devin not here today? Oh, shucks. Devin's off today. These ladies did an amazing job. It was a lot of work preparing to open this office and it was a lot of work to implement everything, all the changes that need to be made, communicating them. They did an amazing job. The next award is for integrity. One of our staff members nominated Austin Lamarche. Austin always, everything he does right there in front of you, he also is doing when nobody is watching, nobody is noticing what he's doing, and he just shows amazing integrity. The next award I'd like to announce is for leadership. Besta Kurru has shown a tremendous amount of leadership in our project of implementing the office in Turkey. She really took a lot of initiative on her own. She helped us figure out how we were going to advertise to hire those positions. She set up a lot of the initial training, so she definitely showed leadership in everything The next award is for innovation. We actually have a lot of innovators at United Medical. It is also what has spurred our growth, obviously stemming from the top with Kamal, but today we would really like to recognize Nikki LaShome. Without Nikki, this prezzi would not have come together. She, we had some ideas and she really went out of her way to find a way to put our ideas And our last award today is for excellence. We are honoring Kadar, who is not here today unfortunately, but she always handles the patients that she talks to exactly the way you would want your grandmother to be treated on the phone. She always shows excellence in everything she does. Yes, Sinam, could you please come take it? Good idea. So as I'm sure you all recognized, all of the awardee, award recipients, let me go with that, came from United Medical. What we are going to do is open up a form in the client portal so that you can nominate people from your offices for these awards. And what we will request is your name, who you're nominating, and a brief paragraph on why you believe that they exhibit one of these values. So thank you, everyone.
Okay, everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started with the presentation portion of our meeting today. So I'm going to be up first. I'm going to give a few updates about the Billing Department and also go through a little bit of the United Medical timeline for those of you who may not be familiar with it. So, United Medical began operating on November 1st, 2005. In January of 2006, we had seven clients. We ended our first full year with 30 clients, which actually exceeded our five-year forecast by year 2007. In 2013, United Medical established a new partnership with Cerner BOS. We acquired 36 clients in 2013 from that partnership, 36 clients in 2014, and 20 clients in 2015. We acquired another 17 clients between 2016 and '17 from Cerner BOS. So currently, we have 130 billing clients. 60 of them are United Medical clients and 70 are Cerner BOS. We span across 79, or 79, excuse me, 29 states, representing 33 unique specialties. We also have onsite and at our Turkey office, nine client managers, two senior client managers, 42 AR specialists, 10 payment posters, nine data processing specialists, eight coders, five credentialing and collection specialists, for a total of 85 employees. So our department is pretty large. I want to talk to you guys a little bit about the future. So, United Medical is accepting new clients both within Delaware to grow the ACO initiative. We are also accepting new clients from Cerner BOS and we've implemented about three clients in the recent month or so and project to have a number of clients coming on board this year. We did open our satellite business office in Turkey in Q3 of 2018. We currently have 29 employees that are working out of that office. And like I said, we are expanding our business opportunities with Cerner. So, based on the questions that we reviewed in the survey that we sent you prior to the meeting, we had a number of questions in regards to the Billing Department about phone calls and how we were going to be handling, you know, an influx of calls or just managing how many people we have onsite versus how many people we have at the Turkey office. So a couple of updates that we did make is on our statements. We put a very clear notation for clients that do not accept patient credit cards over the phone at United Medical. So we put their office numbers on all of the statements to make sure that those calls are routed directly to the office. We were previously receiving a large number of calls for offices that we are not able to take payments for, so we're hoping that's going to alleviate the call volume. On top of that, we are making changes to the statements to encourage patients to utilize the patient inquiry portion available in QuickBase. So we are working to make that portal a little bit more user-friendly and a lot more options so that patients can go online and put their inquiries. This will allow our Turkey office to assist us with phone calls and getting back to the patients because they'll have all the information right in front of them and they can go ahead and make the phone calls later in the day when the time is suitable. This, I think, will help a great deal with the onsite employees in order to alleviate their call volume. And just so everyone knows, the leadership group does review the call volume on a monthly basis and currently we are not above what is required of each AR representative based on the number of employees we have, the number of calls we get, and the number of business days we have. We are in line with the requirements. However, we do understand that patient calls can become time-consuming and take a lot out of our day, so we do want to make this process a little bit easier for all of you. So that's kind of my update with Billing. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce John, and he's going to give Business Development updates.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is John Donaway and I'm the Director of Business Development and I oversee the IT Department here at United Medical. Each year we do this. I really am amazed that this list continues to grow, whether it be the training and IT support, the accountable care, shared savings insurance contracts, the expanded HR services, web design, email hosting. United Medical is committed to our clients and positioning them to thrive as small and medium-sized medical practices, something that really is a rarity in healthcare today. The business has grown from offering a limited number of services to doctors in the communities to becoming a partner with not only our clients but a partner with major hospitals, the largest health insurance companies, state organizations, and Cerner. And then each of our core services have really improved each and every year. We also, the Billing, I'm sorry, the Business Development Team does offer a lot of programs that are designed to engage the population that we have. Our goal is to be the central hub for the data and to be able to quickly analyze and distribute that data in a meaningful way to our practices. Sorry. Sorry about that. So again, our goal is to bring the data from multiple sources into a way that we can centralize that and distribute that to our practices, whether that be data storage in PowerChart, state registries, pharmacy data, insurance data. We're working to properly assess risk of patients or then redistribute that to our medical practices and our clients. For programs such as Million Hearts and other UMACO initiatives, we've developed clinical quality standards and different methods to try to standardize, again, the healthcare that happens in our, each day in our office. Donna, Anthony, and Jessica has also worked with state behavioral health integration programs to better integrate the behavioral health initiative that the state has within our, within our primary care offices. The Million Hearts program is something that I'm really proud of. Million Hearts is a CMS program that has the goal to reduce cardiovascular disease with the ultimate goal to prevent one million heart attacks. Several departments at United Medical work together and we've enrolled over 9,000 Medicare beneficiaries and we have, and we're currently managing over 2,000 high-risk patients. Those high-risk patients are patients that have over 30% chance of having a heart attack within the next five years. And during our first evaluation period, we were able to decrease the population's risk by an average of 7.7%. The new and future business that we have coming up is not only new clients that Rachah kind of initiated or kind of alluded to, but also some new functionality that we have coming. So for the first time in a long time, we are welcoming new clients in the area to join our growing ACO. And I do want to make it really clear that the work that the Billing Department does and the Care Coordination Department does really does making selling this network easy. We're in a great place. We don't need to hire a full sales, or a sales department, or a whole sales team because we've made it easy on Austin, believe me, the Business Development Team appreciates it. But it's quite easy to show new clients, respect the clients, what we have and make their decision pretty easy. We've welcomed, like Rachah said, a couple of new clients already in 2019. There's a family medicine of Middletown and then a nephrology group that just started in Southern Delaware, as well as two Cerner BOS clients. And then we have one pain group that is currently about to go live in the next month or so. And then Dr. Hosmani joined the business, partnered another cardiologist to open a new cardiovascular prevention program that'll also be going live in the next month or so. More for the, as far as the functionality goes, we do have several things within PowerChart to help the patient engagement through technology mainly. Cerner did sign an agreement with Apple and now, really starting now, it's still in testing, but we're able to, through the Apple Health application on a patient's iPhone, connect to the patient portal and bring all of the data from PowerChart right to the patient's iPhone. The next steps with that will be able to push that data back into the patient's portal and then eventually into the EMR itself so that the patients can communicate more effectively with the providers. We're also deploying iPads within the medical practices so the patients can sign things like consent forms or disclosures, as well as contribute their own data to the medical record. Kriyas is currently doing this with the Varyagic program and we also have some new patient workflows that we're able to, that we're able to complete as well. Some other future things, just based off of the questions that were submitted prior to this was QuickBase slowness or QuickBase issues. QuickBase did send several executives down to United Medical last month and we were able to have a productive session with them. So we believe we know the reasons that are causing the QuickBase slowness and we do plan to address those shortly, as well as any inconsistencies with the Internet. But both of those, I expect to be resolved in the very near future. And I think Donna Gunkel's up next with Care Coordination.
Thank you, John.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I am Donna Gunkel, the Director of Clinical Integration, and I oversee the Care Coordination Department, as well as several other areas. So as far as staffing goes, we now have 10 care coordinators, three interns. We do partner with the University of Delaware and their Behavioral Health Science Program every spring to bring interns in to help teach them more about healthcare and what our business does on a day-to-day basis. We have one team leader, three clinical care managers, who are nurses over in the Turkey office, as well as three registered dietitians. We offer, excuse me, we offer several patient wellness programs and if you go out to UMUSA.net, you will see under the "For Patients" section, we have a lot of information that you can share with anyone that may be interested about the wellness programs that we offer. The first one that I wanted to talk about is our Fall Prevention Program. We partnered with SOS Physical Therapy to help promote a program for our Medicare patients where we want to prevent them from future fall risk. We also have our Diabetes Nutrition and Education Program, which I'm very proud of. We started that in 2016. As I mentioned, we now have three registered dietitians. Our newest one was hired this year. We offer both diabetes and nutrition services now in three locations, at our downtown UMC office, Beck's Woods UMC office, as well as we just now implemented services down in our Smyrna office back in February. A little bit about our diabetes program. We are accredited with the American Association of Diabetes Educators as of April 2016 and we go through a re-accreditation process every spring, so we're currently working on that process right now. As you can see from the slide, we do have visits that we do with our patients, both individual and group sessions for our diabetics, as well as nutrition visits. Over the last several years, you can see in most aspects, we have grown, although in 2018, our number of visits for the diabetes group and individuals did go down slightly. So we implemented a process whereby we can capture those patients who are no-shows or who cancel and don't want to reschedule right away. So we call them back so that we can ensure we offer them another opportunity for a visit and we can prevent them from being lost to care. Our nutrition visits have continued to grow year over year. As you can see here, we have grown from approximately 850 visits in 2016 to over 2,200 visits in Now, as far as our Care Coordination Department goes, we do focus on population health. So our team focuses on scheduling patients for hospital follow-up appointments after a inpatient hospitalization or an ER visit. We also schedule patients for consultation visits with specialists who are in our network. Over the last couple of years, we have also partnered with some of our area hospitals, St. Francis Hospital and Nanokoke, so that we can improve setting up our patients for the hospital visits and we now schedule the patients for these visits before they ever leave the hospital. So a little bit about the numbers and the comparison. So for the total number of orders that our team handles, you can see that that's substantially grown since 2016, when we had approximately 25,000 visits that we either were able to confirm that they occurred or we were able to assist in getting them scheduled. And then in 2018... And then in 2018, we were at approximately 35,000 visits. For hospital follow-up visits, the comparison annually, you can see in 2016, we only had about 5,000 visits compared to 11,000 in 2018. So our team has grown substantially and we're very proud of the work that we do in trying to ensure that our patients within the network get the best possible care. As John mentioned a little while ago, the Million Hearts program, care coordination is very involved in this process to make sure, again, that we can put all the pieces together. So it all starts in the practices, but then behind the scenes, we do a lot of work to ensure that the patient forms are all completed, that the enrollments are completed, and if not, our team steps in and helps to complete those forms. We have enrolled over 8,000 patients into the program through December of 2018, and we helped to manage the high-risk enrolled patients, which again, through the end of December was approximately 1,700 patients. So we do a lot of data gathering and going into the charts to pull out that information and then ensure that business development is able to upload that information to the So in our Turkey office, we hired three nurses. They started, two of them started back in November and we added an additional nurse in February. And the role that they are helping us to play is they're doing a lot of chart reviews. So they go into PowerChart and do a lot of investigative work to ensure that the coding of all conditions is at the highest level of specificity for accurate risk scoring. And this is really essential, that we build a correct diagnosis. So for example, if a patient is diagnosed with diabetes and they have a complication like hyperglycemia, that's a much higher risk for than a patient who has diabetes without complications. So we help to ensure that those things are done at the highest level because this does, at the end of the day, affect our overall payments that we get based on our value-based contracts. They also help to clean up the charts. They're out there looking to make sure that all the I C D nine codes have been converted to I C D 10 codes. And they're also beginning to pre-visit risk adjustment audits where they're looking ahead of the game and they're putting in orders so that we can make sure that we're assisting the offices and the patients in closing any care gaps. So that's for things like preventative services. So we're putting in orders for patients to make sure they get their colonoscopies completed, that they get their mammograms done, for example, their dilated retinal eye exams. So again, this all helps us with the overall management of our A C O value-based contracts. And our future path, so our focus is to continue to manage our high-risk populations, including collaboration with Highmark, Health Options, Humana, AmeriHealth Caritas, as well as the Delaware hospitals. As I mentioned, we're partnering with them to make sure that we can identify the high utilizers, the patients that are high cost dollars, and try to make sure that we get them into the appropriate services that they need, for example, getting back to their P C P visits so that we can better manage their care. We're looking to hire additional clinical care managers to conduct those pre- and post-visit risk assessment audits. We're also working with practices to identify patients for enrollment into health plan, case management, and disease management programs through Highmark. We currently do that today through Highmark, the Health Options Medicaid Program. We're also looking to hire a licensed clinical social worker. As John mentioned, we've worked very hard over the last year with a statewide collaborative effort to integrate behavioral health into the primary care offices. So we're looking to hire a social worker to join our team. So if anyone knows a social worker who's looking to join an innovative company, we ask that you have them go out to our website and apply for that position. We are also looking to increase patient outreach to, again, address those care gaps to make sure that our patients get all preventative services. And that's all I have. So Anthony is up next to talk to us about contracting.
Every once in a while, back in the office, typically in the mornings when I'm getting a coffee, someone walks up to me and chitchat a little bit and then they ask me this question. What do you actually do? Now, if the person is from the billing department, I usually take out time and explain to them that if billing is set to be the starting point of all healthcare, then contracting is the foundation on which all of that is built. And at United Medical, as the healthcare system has changed and United Medical itself has evolved with it, the nature of our contracts have also evolved. We're leveraging the size of our network and increasingly moving away from individual fee-for-service contracts where providers are reimbursed based on the number of tests that they carry out. And we're moving increasingly to group-based contracts and we're using the size of our network to extract agreements that reflect the interest of everyone in our network rather than just individual providers. For instance, one of our most important group contracts is a recent one with AmeriHealth Caritas. And in this, we were able to reflect specific carve-outs for practices in cardiology, in nephrology, as well as bariatrics. We also engage in more and more facilities contracts and we're using the mechanism of global payments within those facilities contracts, for instance, to support bariatric surgery under Creos. Of course, we're also moving increasingly towards A C O contracts. And in the state of Delaware, we are probably the only group with contracts, value-based contracts, in Medicare, in Medicaid, in commercial insurance, and in Medicare Advantage. What we're doing is we're using the diversity of this portfolio in a manner that if we're unable to earn shared savings in a particular contract, then earnings in a different contract helps balance the effect of not earning in one specific contract. And that is what has kept us going over the last two years, especially since we haven't been able to successfully break even in the Medicare space. We're also using the mechanism of contracts to engage in research. And the last two speakers have spoken about Million Hearts cardiovascular disease model. Looking forward, we're going to be increasing our outreach to the state of Delaware. In the next two or three weeks, we expect a visit from the leadership of the Department of Insurance. And we're also working with the state of Delaware in the Primary Care Collaborative, which in the next one or two years is going to change the system of reimbursement for primary healthcare. And this is especially important because it impacts all of us, not just as employees of United Medical, but also as patients in our individual right. We're looking forward to new types of contracts, risk-based contracts, and especially we're interested in developing what's called direct contracts. These are contract mechanisms between provider groups such as ours and private self-insured companies. And the goal here is to help such companies, not just to manage their patients better, but also help them to reduce the overall costs of their funding of their healthcare plans. And this type of contract is especially important because it impacts pretty much every aspect of the United Medical family. It impacts the work of care coordination, it impacts the work of business development, billing, the surgery center, as well as Creos. So in summary, there are three principles that have guided us, that I'd like to recommend to all of us. You see, in the course of everyday work, it's easy to forget sometimes that we, all of us here, are part of the United States healthcare system. May not be the most efficient, but is the largest and the most innovative healthcare system in the world. And it's a system that is driven by ideas, ideas from a broad spectrum of people, much like all of us who are here today. The system requires all of us to constantly think forward, to improve ourselves, to take advantage of the educational opportunities around us, to grow ourselves. Perhaps you're a client manager, and every day you worry about those claims denials. But the system requires all of us to think past that, to ask ourselves the question, what else is going on in revenue cycle management? You're in coding department, why is risk adjustment such an important issue now in the management of the primary healthcare practice? Or you're an M A or a practice manager, how can we better engage our non-compliant patients in a manner that helps the care coordination department to better deliver the services that we offer every day? So the system challenges all of us to grow ourselves individually, understanding that as we grow ourselves, we grow the company. And United Medical can grow from the sum of our individual parts. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're really ready to go. My name is Susan Anderson and I am the COO and CFO for United Medical and United Medical Clinic. So welcome again today. I oversee operations, human resources, and accounting. My team, you know, I was sitting here thinking about this as everyone was going through their presentation. And when we started United Medical, there were six people. And now, the roles that I oversee are more than six. So it's really amazing how much we have grown in 12, almost 13 years now. And we would not be able to do it without all of the people here. So I personally thank my team, the accounting team, the human resources, our facilities, individuals, all of our providers, our practice administrator, our clinical office managers, check-in, check-out, medical assistants, our call center. We could not do it without you. Thank you very much. In 2019, we are going to continue with our monthly social size. That has really, I believe, has been really beneficial in bringing people together who didn't normally communicate with one another. We had a lot of fun activities. I actually personally went to CrossFit and thought that I was going to die, but now I go to CrossFit every week. So it's been a real fun experience. And when we have activities, even if you think you can't do it, please come out, join us. We also, in the coming year, under Donna Gunkel, her direction, we are adding clinical educators for our staff. So we are going to arrange for our diabetic educators and nutrition, nutrition specialists to come to our office and share their knowledge with us to help us individually with our health because we are a healthcare company. Today, everyone received their lanyard and the last of our photos were taken for our badges, so you should all be receiving your badge within the next three weeks. We also are continuing with our new Hire, Lunch, and Learns. And this year, due to the changes in law, we are increasing our sexual harassment awareness training. I know a lot of people have already seen a lot of videos in the meetings that they're in, but it will be part of a mandatory training that we're going to be undertaking. We also, for 2019, have initiated the U M A C O New Hire Orientation Training between Human Resources and Business Development. We're implementing a new program to hopefully improve on protecting our patients' health information, as well as providing education to all newcomers to our A C O. We also continue to promote the M G M A A C N P E education. And if you did not notice it, there were some pamphlets out front that answered a lot of the Human Resource frequently asked questions. I am also going to be distributing that electronically, so if there weren't enough copies, everyone will get a copy. And it does answer a lot of the questions that we receive either after these town hall meetings or through the quick base suggestions. So we tried to address as many as we could. Social sizing. And now, please join me in welcoming all of our new staff at Smyrna, our providers there, Dr. Rufino Rosell, Dr. Ma Karadad Rosell, Dr. Jennifer Leguido, Dr. Blanca Ocampo Lim, and all of the dedicated staff there. The future path of operations is we are working on consolidating our Aston and Gilpin office. We are hopefully going to be opening up an office at the Falk Road location where American Surgery is, and we hope to offer additional support for pre-surgical visits for the patients for Creos and whatever other physicians we can support there. We are also looking to expand in Dover by adding an O B G Y N and an additional provider, again, to do pre-surgical screening. And then from an administrative standpoint, we are looking to open the call center for United Medical Clinic at the United Medical Business Office. It just makes more sense, we have more room there, and we're hoping to be able to provide a better service to our clinics by doing that. So we are united and today we have, a lot of people in the suggestion box have asked that we do some kind of team-building exercise at the town hall meeting. So today, I am really happy to share with you an exercise that we hope imparts what the goal of the activity is. Ann Wilson, I'd like to thank Ann, and Terri Ray was instrumental in putting this together. And now, I'm going to introduce Terri. Terri is a Human Resource Specialist at United Medical. She's going to be walking us through this activity.
Very good. Thank you, Susan. Hello, everyone. I'll try that one more time. Thank you, Susan. Hello, everyone. Very good. Thank you. I am really excited to lead you through this team-building activity. So with that being said, let me kind of walk you through the process. So first of all, you will find a few items or some objects in the center of your table. At this time, don't touch them, just leave them aside. H R is part of staffing, so the first thing I have to do is set you all up for success, each of your teams. So there should only be eight people. Is that what it says? Yes, eight. That is not quite centered. So you're just going to have to go with me on this. There needs to be eight people per table. So just take a quick inventory and if, would you like to make the adjustment? And if, would you like to make the adjustment with chat? Okay. I have to tell you, by birthright, I'm a middle child and I don't need it, but I will speak into it anyway. Is this not working? Okay. I will speak into it. So at this time, I need to be sure that there are eight people at each table. So take inventory of the table. I'm trying to set you up with success. So in order to do that, if you have less than eight people, please raise your hand. Okay? So hold on one second, put your hand down. Do we have a table that has more than eight people? If so, can someone on that table stand up? And we're going to move you, so I'm gonna ask you to come up here with me. So do we have a table that has more than eight people? No, we're all set, okay? Yes? Dr. Rosell, you're all set? You've got eight people there?
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Okay, with a show of hands, may I please see the tables that have less than eight? Less than eight? We have one table here. Any others? Two, three, four, five, six. So I'm gonna ask everyone to participate in this exercise, so I imply that it's time the directors. Please find a table. So again, with a show of hands. Deborah, I think you have the person you need. We'll have to sit you there. Other table, less than eight? Less than eight? Less than eight? Raise your hand. We have one in the back. Anthony, you're all set. We have a table there. Johnlin, we have a table here. One more? Okay. So, okay. So Risha, if you can go over the side. Oh, the orange table, you only have seven people. That's the problem. So Risha, go over to the red balloon. Red balloon? And one more pool over here. Sit there at the red table? Great. Okay. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Pardon me? They have eight?
No, we have four shorts still. Risha, over here.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Oh, so, okay, it's okay. Listen, in the real world, do you not have, are you expecting? In the real world, in business areas and all the, in the, what's going on over there? In the real world, in the clinical office side, or in the clinical office as well as the business office, we are expecting everyone with a show of hands. How many people have interviewed with me? Have you heard me say? We are expecting all of our employees to come to work every day. Come on, help me out. Every day. How many people am I interviewing in this room? Every day you are scheduled. Come on, you're running time. Every day you are scheduled. Very good, thank you. And so sometimes, we can't make it to work. I recently, Dr. Barnett Smith can tell you, I've been in the office three times. I recently said, I didn't make it to work. Well, my department had to make accommodations. We're gonna make accommodations here. So, coaches will need to be standing by to allow them to get some extra assistance, okay? So, are we all set? We have eight people at the table for the two tables, unless they have seven, correct? Coaches, go stand by that table so you can offer them some extra assistance. Okay, with that being said, we're going to move very quickly. Okay. So, there are a couple of rules I'd like to go over. Now that we have everyone, for the most part, as properly staffed as we possibly could, I'm gonna ask you, we're all set, to kind of just kind of go over some basic things with me. So the purpose of this exercise is for each team to efficiently complete their task in the allotted time. Please note that all tables or teams have the same activity. I am the facilitator, and so I will announce the start and the finish of the activity. And by the way, no additional instructions will be provided by me once the activity Okay. I'm gonna walk you through step one. We're gonna go through this together. Step one, at this time, I would like one person from each table to grab the red bag, grab the red bag from the center of the table. What I would like you to do is I would like you, please, to select one item from the table, or sorry, one item from the bag, without peeking. Isn't that adorable? Do not peek in the bag. Select one item from the bag and then pass the bag around so that everyone has an object. So as we are doing that, everyone is not peeking in the red bag. You're gonna select one item from the bag and pass it along. Anne, if I could ask you to ensure that the blue and the orange table are all set? Okay. See that? We're already having a lot of fun in the back of the room.
Thank you.
Okay, we should be all set. This is a timed activity, so I need your attention up here, please. This is a timed activity, so let's move on to the next step. With a show of hands, is there a table that still has not pulled an item from the bag? You're still, you guys are still working on that? Okay, let's move it along. It's a timed activity. Okay, here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, so let me walk you through the next step. Remember, after I'm done providing instructions, I will not provide additional instructions to your team. The goal is to succeed. So I would like the person who has the stethoscope to play the role of the provider. So the provider, please raise your hand. Good, okay. So I'm just going to ask my coaches for some assistance. Coaches? Anne, are we all set with the blue and the orange table? Great. Susan, back there, the table, I think it was the orange table who had less than eight, are they all set? Do they know what role they need to play? Okay. So is there a table that did not, where someone did not pull the role of a provider or a patient? Good, I'm gonna take that as a yes. Outstanding. So we're going to move on. So providers, pay attention. Everyone, listen, because this is gonna be the next step. Okay. The provider is going to be in charge of the contents of the box. Okay? You wanna look to your, you're gonna wanna look to your team's provider for instructions. Okay? At this time, provider, please take possession of the box. Do not open it yet. Please take possession of the box. Here we go. Provider, please take possession of the box. Begin. If you are the provider, your instructions are located inside of the blue provider envelope on top of the box. If you are the provider, you will find your instructions inside of the blue envelope, in blue, on top of the box. It is a large room, therefore you may need to speak up in your team, because your team will need to hear your instructions. If you are a patient service rep, you need to open your window, follow the provider's instructions. Time, freeze. Are you having too much fun? Time. Okay, everybody take it easy. Have a seat, for just not, just freeze, stop where you are. James, the word is freeze, stop where you are. At this time, I'm still here to support you and set your team up for success. At this time, we're pausing. So if you are playing the role of the patient and you still have the blindfold on, good for you, because you are following instructions. You're supposed to leave it on until the provider told you to take it off. But at this time, listen, at this time, please, if you're the patient, you may remove your blindfold. At this time, the facilitator is telling you to, it's okay, remove the blindfold. And Jessica, it's okay, you may remove the blindfold. Jessica, the first to keep it on.
My provider is telling me not to.
Okay. I am, I am like, come on, this moment, for the split second, just the split second, you may remove the blindfold, okay? At this time, patient, please feel free to finish, you're assembling your task, and if anyone would like to assist the patient, feel free to do so. At this time, please, all teams may finish their task and the patient can do it without the blindfold. Yes, I know, you guys are winners. You guys can just sit there and look good. And you all do that so well. Okay. All set? Okay. Is there a table with a show of hands that still needs time to assemble their nine-piece puzzle? Sorry, did that sound derogatory? It's just a nine-piece puzzle, people. Okay, someone won the lottery back there at that blue table. All right, here we go. So at this time, with a show of hands, is there still a team that did not assemble their nine-piece puzzle? Okay? Let's get that going. In the meantime, we're going to move on. So let me ask you a few questions. One of the things that I noticed before I actually, I'm gonna make an observation first. One of the things that I noticed is that I simply said, provider, take possession of the box. Could I have a volunteer, a provider, someone who's playing the role of a provider, not like a real-life provider, the one who's playing the role of a provider now? Could you please take possession of the box? And could someone be willing to read to me the instructions on the outside of the box? Anyone? Oh, great, we have someone over here who volunteered, I'm so excited.
Only the provider may open the box after reading the instructions contained in this envelope. Failure to follow provider's orders will not achieve desired results.
So when the patient does not follow the provider's instructions, what happens to the patient? Someone over here at this table has that incident. They do not get better, is what I think she meant to say. So here's what I'm trying to make. There are a lot of instructions that you had to follow, correct? Okay, so here's what I'd like to point out to you. The provider had a list of instructions to read. The provider was supposed to hand out envelopes. After the provider handed out envelopes to the patient service rep, they were supposed, it said, they need to read their instructions, open the envelope. And then the business office representatives, they were And then the business office representatives, they were responsible for sharing their strategic plan, piecing together and working together as a four-member group and sharing the vision with everyone else at the table. Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that what we do in the real world? The business office works together with other providers, patient service representatives, other business office reps, and they have to share the vision. Did anyone happen to notice, or did anyone feel as though we could have just taken all those instructions and kind of summed them up really quickly and just said, "Here, assemble this nine-piece puzzle, go." Would that have been easier than what the process you had to follow right now? Would that have been easier? Yes. Well, guess what? In the real world, in both the clinical office as well as the business development office, there are policies, there are procedures. Everyone in this room, regardless of your position, has to follow HIPAA guidelines, right? There are workflows, there are processes. If you do not follow the workflow or the process, or something like a HIPAA guideline, there are negative consequences to your actions. I had a team who said, "Okay, we're all done," and they hadn't opened a single envelope. I'm not gonna ask you, raise your hand, but I'm telling you, you all know on that side of the room, there were two tables that did that. Okay? But there's no need to point it out. The reality is, is sometimes we miss instructions. Sometimes, I as a patient could miss instructions. So, it's important that I listen as a patient, and the patient's not in the room to hear this speech, this presentation, or to go through this exercise, but you are. So, if you work in the clinical office, it's your responsibility to support your real provider in the office with providing that information. You know, even on the clinical side, we have care coordination representatives who are responsible. They don't see the patient, but they communicate with them. But I have to tell you, there are other people in the business office that is also, that also has a direct impact on the patient, just to make sure that they're supporting the role of the patient, such as coding. Who in this room codes? There we go, all right? And then, we have to submit a claim. We have people in the claims area, right? We have people who are not submitting clean claims, that happens, and when that happens, we have accounts receivable representatives, including representatives in Turkey, they're not even in the room, but yet we work in partnership with them anyway. So, my point is, is that, yes, it was a bit lengthy. We could have really shortened those instructions, but we wanted to walk you through the process. Okay. At this time, what I would like to do is we're gonna take that exercise, that activity you did, one step further. So, please, if you were the role of the provider, please take possession of that box again, okay? Working in partnership with the patient, please listen, I'm running out of time, time activity, even for me too. If you're the role of the provider, I need your help. If you're the role of the patient, I want the two of you to work in partnership. If you did not follow the instructions and assemble your activity on the activity mat, please make that correction at this time. I'm going to call, also, provider and patient, please notice that your patient pouch, the activity pouch, and the white box contain a number. That number's the same number at each table, okay? So, I'm going to ask everyone from, that has, our teams one through five, to please at this time, bring up your puzzle on the activity mat and bring it up here. Oh, wait a minute, freeze. Coaches, okay, you need to get that going. So, I need, I need coaches to come forward. Okay? And there's gonna be one more step. While they're doing that, I'm going to move on. So, lady, team, team one, and can you, can you show where team one is? Do we start from here? Okay. Team, I need, want, coaches, I need you to do team one, two, three, four, and five first. And as soon as we have the coaches supporting the teams one through five, as soon, you need to follow that through. Barbara, go ahead and pull that contact paper off and stick it on there. I know you didn't leave it, but if you can do that. Coaches, I need you to, coaches, I need you to take the paper off, remember the contact paper off, and place it on the activity. Okay. Coaches, please rip off that. The contact paper has to go on your puzzle, on the front side, right? Okay. As soon as you're done, I need tables, one, teams one through five, as soon as your contact paper is on, bring it on over to Susan and Ann.
One through five.
One through five. I am going to multitask, so I'm gonna ask everyone. Okay, so I have a question for the group while tables one through five, please. Thank you. Okay. Tables one through five, we're gonna bring up your mat, just try to be that. Okay. While teams one through five are bringing up your puzzles, may I ask you another question? Let's hear from the patient. How, when the patient was assembling the puzzle, I would like someone to share with me, just kind of yell it out, I don't have the microphone, someone who was playing the role of the patient, okay? When you were trying to assemble the puzzle, was it easy to hear the instructions? How well did you, how well did you do when you were, when you were putting together that puzzle? Patient? How, how easy was it to follow the instructions in the patient's service way? Okay. Did anyone have any difficulties in doing the patient? Every patient had an easy time? That's good. That means, guys, do you mind? Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna ask you, when you bring up your activity mat, we're gonna talk and just kind of bring it upside down. Okay. So, we can go ahead and bring in six through 10, please. So, the patients, the patient cases, did any patient have any difficulty with a show of hands of assembling their puzzle? Okay, so that's excellent. Oh, you did have a little difficulty over there? Okay. Why did you have any difficulty? What was your difficulty? What was, what was the challenge? Okay, just one second.
I didn't know what I was doing.
That's well put. And, and in the real world, sometimes patients don't. Once again, it's up to us. And the reality is, is that, you know, one of the changes that you made, right, was to take off the blindfold because of nothing else. While it wasn't easy, the process was slow, was it not? It was lengthy. And so, once you were able to remove the blindfold, isn't that true sometime with our patient? Are we okay up there? Isn't it true sometimes when you take the blindfold off the patient, so to speak, they're able to see? There's no reason why we can't keep that same philosophy here within our business areas and our clinical areas. Finally, I wanna talk to you about, how about tables 11 through 15? I lost the presentation, sorry. Tables 11 through 15, can you go ahead and bring up your activity at this time? 11 through 15, thank you, John. So, patient education is important, and that's the benefit of communication. And then finally, I'd like to point out, you know, the business, the business office, the business office representatives, they came together, they had to share their vision with the clinical side. As I said earlier, that's important to do, even in our, with representatives who were not, they may not have direct contact with patients, but in order for them to share their plan, and we must follow the processes, that's how we support the overall strategic goal. Your team had a job, and that was to open up your strategic plan envelope. Contained in your envelope was the vision. That's, that's what business development does all the time. That's what our leaders, our directors do all the time, is direct us on their vision for the success of the ACO. There are three main goals of the accountable care organization. Who can give me one? One. Raise a hand? Guys, this only works if you participate. Give me one goal of the accountable care of our ACO. Yes, don't. Quality of care. Another one. Reduce costs. Very good. And then finally, the third? If we, I'm sorry, so you had, I'm sorry, I apologize. Improve the quality of care. Provide an accountable care, and then that will reduce costs. Thereby, also, the third being? Improving the patient's health, actually. I'm satisfied when I get better, am I not? So, there's the three goals of the ACO. So, one of the things, oh, what do we need now? Thank you, six. You did? Okay. So, what we've done is we've taken your piece, your puzzle, and here's the point I'm trying to make. It doesn't matter if you work in the clinical office, it doesn't matter if you work in the business office. Every one of us has a role to play in the overall strategic plan of the accountable care organization. Please note, in this, in this team-building activity, every one of us had a role to play, whether you were the patient, the provider, you were a patient service representative, representing the clinical office. If you were a business office rep, it does matter, it was coding, claims, human resources, collections, AR, payment post date care organization, data processing. Everybody has their part to play. What would have happened if one of your puzzle pieces, if one person on your team chose not to participate? Or how about this? What would have happened if the person playing the role of the patient did not assemble the puzzle and had been missing a piece? Your puzzle would not have come together, correct? Right. That's the point I'm trying to make. Every one of us in this room for the activity played a role, and if you were not doing the activity, there were, there were people that were coaching you through it. And so, as a result of that, here's what we've done with your puzzles. So, if you could, Matt, just ask you, Dan, to flip that around, take that off the board for just one second, just take that off the board, thank you, and spin it around. This right here? So, you see, this is the puzzle. In case you didn't know, there were four different puzzles. One was United Medical Clinic, one was Creos, one was ASC, and one was United Medical. And so, each of you had a puzzle, same activity, it was just a different image, and yet we were able to put it together. Thank you. And as a result of doing that, look what we've done. On the reverse of that puzzle, did you notice it was a two-piece puzzle? On the reverse of that, right, is a demonstration of how, what happens when everyone, including the coaches, who were indirectly a part of the process, right, have come together because everyone did their piece, we were able to support our accountable care organization. So, United Medical, we are united. Here are all of the organizations and codes representing our organization. So, I hope you learned something here today. The goal, if you haven't gotten it, what I was trying to impart is that everyone has to do their part. All the piece of the puzzle. Thank you for pointing out. I'm really sorry. So, everyone, now, I would like to introduce, introduce to you Dr. Rhonise Barnett-Smith. She has been practicing medicine for 14 years, eight of those with United Medical Clinic. She is an integral piece of the puzzle at United Medical Clinic. She is a wife, she's a mother of two, and she is our very own patient advocate.
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know exactly how to live up to that introduction, but for those of you who don't know me, I'm Rhonise Barnett-Smith, I'm a family practice physician, and I've been with United Medical, as Susan said, for eight years. My, going off, a little bit off the cuff here because Terry said a lot of my speech, thanks for that, Terry. So, what I was asked to do, if you can say that I was being asked, I think I was a little bit more forced, but was to, to talk about my vision of what the ACO is and what it can do for our patients. As Susan said, I like to think of myself as a patient advocate. For me, practicing medicine is about putting the patient first, and their healthcare first, and their needs first, and making sure that at the end of the day, that's what we took care of. And when I was thinking about that, it reminded me of something that we did this past summer. Highmark asked us to speak on how we keep patient costs down while still providing a good quality of care, and I was running off at the mouth as usual, and inadvertently said something that really struck a chord with them. And it was about making small changes to provide big outcomes for patients. And in that particular instance, it was about a patient and changing their medication to not only give them the same type of treatment they were getting before, but at a much lower cost, which not only, over time, will help the patient be able to reduce their co-pays and what they pay out of pocket, but also helps keep the healthcare costs down at the insurance level, which hopefully, on the back end, will save money for the patient as well. And that ended up with me being on this pretty embarrassing picture right there, talking about making small changes. And, and that really is one of the biggest pieces of making this ACO successful. I know that change is hard. It is hard for me every day. Kamal will tell you that I am very resistant to change. But what, one of the things that I've noticed is that with making very small changes, you really can make a difference in how the patient receives their healthcare, how they feel satisfied, and honestly, help them keeping, keeping them coming back, and keeping them healthy and out of the hospital. And that's really our goal, isn't it? So, once again, that's that embarrassing picture. Okay, so, what I envisioned was how a patient interacts with our ACO. So, is that big enough? Okay. So, this is a lovely elderly gentleman, it looks like he needs some care, correct? So, he's, imagine he's a new patient, he's calling one of the clinics in the ACO. So, his first interaction is going to be with the patient call center. And they're gonna do things such as welcome him to the practice, tell him how it works, also, give, invite him to the patient portal, tell him about the new patient paperwork, ask him which provider he'd like to see, and so forth. So, the day of the appointment arrives, he comes to check in, and he sees this very friendly gentleman who's welcoming, welcoming him to the practice. He's got a smile on his face, so I think he's, he's doing a good job there. But at the same time, that, that check-in person is making sure that they're validating the patient's insurance, getting an ID, making sure their demographics are okay, making sure that they're here on time, making sure they're in the right place. All those things are what, the, the patient has that interaction with the check-in person. Next, the medical assistant calls him back, brings him back into the patient room, gets him ready, gets vitals, gets his history, asks him what he, what he's coming in for, making sure his medicines are correct, making sure we have the right pharmacy, and, and, I can't even count the number of things that they do, but all those things are done even before the next step comes, and that's the patient seeing the provider. The provider's in the room, they take care of business, and then the person's checking out. There's another person that he sees. Make sure that he has his prescriptions, make sure that they have any referrals or orders or anything else that the patient needs to leave with, and also to make sure that he has another appointment set up so that he can follow through with all the things that the doctor ordered. And lastly, or maybe not lastly, but one of the next steps is that care coordination can get involved. If we have them scheduled to see a nutritionist, they make sure that that appointment is actually made. They'll follow up to make sure that a patient got a colonoscopy if it's in, if it's in the orders and it's not completed. If the person happened to go to the emergency room or to the hospital, they make sure that they have a follow-up appointment to discuss that visit. And then ultimately, the patient ends up repeating the whole process and coming back to the provider. So, why did I go through that whole Riegerman rule that I'm sure you guys all know and are very familiar with? It's that there were several steps that happened before the patient came to see the provider. steps that happened before the patient came to see the provider care coordinators call center front desk MA all those things were done before the patient even saw the provider so while it may seem that this whole process is very provider driven it's really not it is about everyone in the process because if anything like Terry said gets messed up or gets askew during that process it can really disrupt the whole thing it can keep the patient from coming back it can keep the patient from getting the things that they need to get in order to keep themselves healthy and so if we can think about that if you can think about how integral you are to the process I think that it will make the success of the ACO that much better it's hard to change we don't have to do a 180 change we don't even have to do a 45 degree change but just a better smile or more patience or better understanding of what the patient needs can truly make this ACO a better success thank you
Now I have the pleasure of doing two things oops I probably shouldn't have done that I'm gonna go back one should be so first I'm going to reintroduce Kamal Erkin although everyone knows him he is our fearless CEO and then the second thing I would like to do is take a moment and honor Dr. Ergau Dr. Ergau started Creos many moons ago but he's been going strong for more than 10 years and we'd like to thank him for that Uh oh we don't have our pretty thing but you have the ACO puzzle Thank you
Well, thank you very much Susan thank you very much to our fearless CEO Kamal I'm delighted to be here this afternoon very many familiar faces I'm happy to see again but also many faces I've never seen and this is wonderful it is wonderful because it tells me that United Medical is not just about an EMR platform and offices but it's about people who are dedicated to really building this wonderful platform in Delaware which is unique that is to coordinate the care of Delawareans to levels really never seen before and I can tell you myself as a physician myself as part of Creos I'm really very proud to be part of this network I want to go through a little bit of what Creos is and a little bit of its history and where we are going so Creos is a surgical practice it stands for Christian Institute of Advanced Surgery and our mission really is to provide a patient-centered exceptional surgical care so the key words there are patient-centered the patient is at the center of our care to provide exceptional care with great skills with surgeons that are always at the forefront of developments of surgery to provide the very best to our patients but also knowing that at heart at their foundation they are physicians that they are there to heal the patients so unless the patient is at the center of our empathy and compassion we will not be able to provide that healing that doesn't come just with a knife so that patient-centered mission is what guides us our vision really is to build a nationally recognized surgical practice and we have we have it's a surgical practice that has been able to perform over 8,000 bariatric procedures which is as big a number as any very important group in this country we have been selected to perform advanced procedures like the V blok in fact about two years ago our group was selected to carry on a new procedure known as V blok and we were one of two centers in the country that have been selected to do that it really started with two surgeons back in 2001 myself and Dr. Gail Nguyen were the two surgeons at Creos and really our practice was fairly peripheral at that time and we wanted to be at the center we wanted to be at the center not because we wanted to to glorify ourselves but we wanted to be at the center because we wanted to advance surgical practice in Delaware we wanted to advance beyond what we were thought in residency currently there are seven providers this is probably the largest private surgical group in Delaware we perform different procedures that's what we call general surgery and then we specialize in bariatric surgery we do colorectal surgery we do robotic assisted surgery we do advanced procedures to treat reflux including the placement of a new device known as Lynx and of course the bariatric and other procedures like breast surgery as well in terms of bariatric surgery we do gastric bypass the gastric sleeve gastric band gastric balloon the V blok therapy duodenal switch and also we offer non-surgical weight management as well with programs that we have within Creos what is what are bariatric surgery procedures well bariatric surgery procedures really are geared to make changes within the digestive tract in order to allow people to lose weight substantially and keep that weight off that's the whole point so that would mean making changes on the stomach it will make sometimes making changes on the small intestine as well that is the essence of bariatric surgery we have the most experienced surgeons who have been really as I said at the very forefront as I said we started our surgical practice as two surgeons fairly much in the periphery and we wanted to come to the center to bring the advanced procedures to our community so myself and Dr. Nguyen were the very first ones who undertook laparoscopic gastric bypass in the state of Delaware way back in 2001 we were the first practice to offer the gastric band in the Delaware Valley we were the first practice to offer the laparoscopic sleeve gastrectomy in our area we were the first practice to do something called laparoscopic ERCP which is a complex procedure that requires cooperation between gastrointestinal doctors as well as surgeons we were the first ones to undertake a single site robotic cholecystectomy which means undertaking goldbladder removal through a single incision using the robotic instrument we were the first practice to introduce the gastric balloon the V blok and also to perform the duodenal switch procedure we have advanced the care of the bariatric patient in the state of Delaware by organizing a multidisciplinary approach to the care of the bariatric patient which means that before bariatric surgery is undertaken we have a whole host of preparation that require cooperation between different specialists and their bariatric programs we built a bariatric program in the areas leading bariatric programs obviously the American Surgery Center and I'm the medical director for it the St. Francis Bariatric Program and Dr. Nguyen my partner she's the medical director there and also the bariatric program at Christiana Care was built by our group as well and the medical director is my associate Dr. Peters as well the center of our specialty really is bariatric surgery so what is bariatric surgery as I said it is a form of treatment of morbid obesity with a surgical approach and who would be a candidate for this procedure it would be people who have at least 100 pounds of weight in excess of their healthy weight so if a person's healthy weight is supposed to be 150 pounds if they gain weight to the level of 250 pounds that would be the time when bariatric surgery would be considered and clearly bariatric surgery is a very drastic approach to this problem but we feel that morbid obesity is also a drastic problem it's the cause of multiple serious diseases in our country including high blood pressure diabetes sleep apnea and many types of cancers and currently it is the most effective treatment for this condition clearly there are many other ways in which people can try to lose weight including dieting with calorie restriction and exercising but people who have tried them know that time and time again this this process has failed them why because the weight loss is temporary if any of you have followed The Biggest Loser the famed TV show you will know that none of these contestants ever have a reunion and the reason is because many of them regain the weight and it's not because they don't have willpower or they're not following through it's because it is very hard to lose weight just with soft methods the reason is as they restrict their calories increase their exercise over the long term their metabolic rate goes down their energy expenditure their basic general energy expenditure goes down which means no matter how much they exercise no matter how much calorie restrictions they do they end up gaining weight the only intervention where the basic metabolic rate remains constant is bariatric surgery that's why bariatric surgery is so successful in the spirit of advancing really the best care in our area we've also partnered with United Medical to build a surgery center the American Surgery Center it started under the United Medical Management barely four years ago and yet it has achieved many things that centers that have been around for many years have not been able to achieve it is accredited by the National Society that accredits surgery centers more recently it underwent a survey side survey to be accredited as a center of excellence for bariatric surgery and I believe there is no slide for it as well I believe it is the first surgery center that has an electronic medical record as well and at least in our area it's a 23-hour facility which means that we're able to do procedures where patients can stay overnight as well what do patients say they are absolutely satisfied if you look at the patient survey results from the American Surgery Center the surveys are just up to the roof I mean the reviews we get from the patients are absolutely exceptional and the reason is because when you need to have surgery that can be done safely at the surgery center why do you want to go through a huge institution a big hospital navigating through lots of loopholes with yourself and your families which can be very exhausting by itself when you can go through a center which is small where there are people that are centered just on you and no surprise that patients are so so happy I'm very happy to see many of the surgery center staff here and I want to say thank you to them because it's their work really that is generating so much satisfaction among our patients thank you
So when Dr. Edna was doing his speech one point that I'd like to one item I'd like to point out so he talks about back in 2002 which is about 17 years ago now United Medical was founded in 2005 so the relationship that we have started back in earlier in 2003 when he actually came to our office and I may have said this before but I don't I don't think there's any harm to repeat when he came to our office before that time bariatric surgery was not a covered surgery the insurance was not covering this okay so I was new as a new business office manager at that time we were trying to franchise our business office services to other practices and I said what is he doing right this is not going to get paid and this is true I said this many times so I'm like you know if the insurance are not paying it's not going to be okay so and but I still kind of listened to him and understand what he was trying to do and because we were so busy so then I said we'll just spend our time and then see if we can get anywhere with it in less than three four months we got all the insurance contracts these procedure quotes they were never recognized before 2003 it was they started recognizing these and then it was picked up by Medicare as well later on and and it still didn't stop the process in the last 17 years it didn't stop so there's still new stuff for example gastric sleeve this is a new procedure it started in 2010 like for the first seven years we were doing procedures bariatric procedures and and all of a sudden there's a new one and in a couple of years after 2010 we actually start doing more of these new ones and insurance they were not paying for this new one at the level that they should be paying and there's still issues with it but this is the process that we went through so now we do have a seminar group in the room I just saw them earlier they're right there so our relationship with them started in 2002 so that time it was February and they were our third clients so now from for 17 year after the 17 year of relationship that we had for them to take us to a next level meaning they're merging into United Medical Clinic it was a lot of responsibility and it was a lot to actually take on my side personally because we have a relationship it's been 17 years it's so strong we don't want to ruin it so then the responsibility that we take is at a greater level so the worst thing is we want to ruin something that we built in 17 years so that's same with Creos which Creos actually their form of our form of relationship changed from them being the client in 2012 10 years after we nine years after we took them as a client they asked us to do the full-time service in terms of the management they went with our EMR it was a full as I said full service so and now today we are not only having the client vendor relationship but we have a partnership at ASC we manage Creos for day-to-day operations and the relationship at a different level so now this is open for our other clients obviously so is it our plan to do this not necessarily because they don't have to be part of us if as long as we can support them from the business office services standpoint they don't need to be part of us but if it's going to make it easier then we will let we will allow them we will allow them to be part of us because they need to they need to enjoy the economic scale that we have and that's why we built this the way that we did so today my part actually as I'm going through they're going through the event what I see is we have six directors they made their the user updates we have now this year two providers who is now are part of this and as you can see we are trying to make this differently by trying but we don't know to make this at the greatest level this is not going to be the best ever and it's not going to be the worst one so what you need to understand and what we need to understand is we'll try this to make it better if we reached our best town hall meeting then we're in trouble so there's nowhere to go right so the idea is can we actually work together to make this more progress so that we can actually not only just take it within industry standards but our internal benchmarks can we take this to a different level and I'm the B team so when we were when we were getting ready for the town hall the team actually kind of worked independently I worked independently from Susan's team you may believe this sooner it's all up to you but we didn't actually talk about what they were going to do now I'm not talking about the updates that they have given of course the updates we knew what we had to because you had questions for us and we wanted to make sure that not only we give you updates but we are able to answer those questions in the in your in our future updates into the partner updates so that questions are answered so now what I what I realized this morning and I know where Susan is so she's she's back there at the corner so she's like well it's almost now because she saw my part she's like well if you just like coordinate this together because there's a lot of She's like, well, if you just like coordinate this together, because there's a lot of, not redundancies, but there's a lot of, because the way that I explain is a little bit different than what they were doing, but it's the same focus that we have. And that's true for Dr. Ida's case, where, what Dr. Marissa and Gauri, she came to manage, she said, well, I think Terry already did my part. And I was just telling her, no, she didn't. Because Terry started in a different way, and you are going to say it in a different way, but you did. Listening to you was, and I did change my opening on you, not liking the change in my way. But listening to you was, it was a reassurance to me that, okay, so it's working. What we are trying to do is working. So, we, we want to make these changes, these progressive ideas, we want to make these organically. We don't want to just do it and then it doesn't make any sense. So, I know some of you are having difficulty from the badge. I promise to next time, we'll have a bigger screen. So, what I would like to see for our people is, which I actually do repeat this a lot in our lunch and learn, especially for new employees, you may have heard this from me before, but I want everyone in this room and your families to be part of the system. And this is not about your title or your designation. Now, when I was listening to the partner, Susan Terry and Dr. Marissa, the similarities that I see with what I'm going to share with you there a lot. So, now, what it means is about, if it's not about the title and if it's not about the designation, what can you do? Can you make an impact? Can you influence and can you have the inspiration on others? So, that, I do want to actually kind of explain that. So, you may expect different things from this meeting. But my, I also expect different things. And my idea is, I want to, I want to influence you the way that I want. And if I get five more people, that we, next, next time we do this, we are going to be strong. Now, what it is that each person, each individual, individual, what I need you to ask yourself is, why are you doing what you are doing today? So, do you have the passion to do this? Okay? If you have the passion to do this, like, are you good at what you are doing? Are you a good provider? Are you a good surgeon? Are you a good dealer? Are you a good coder? Then, and also, there has to be economic drivers behind this. So then, all these three need to get, need to get together to make the perfect situation for us, the ideal state. Now, what this would do, and I can, you know, explain it in more detail if you need to, the term that we use is the flying wheel. What that means is, if you have this, then that person will do their max for the organization that they're in, the families that they're in, or the other social situation that they're in. So, if you do charity, if you have a passion for it, you'll make it. And for the way that we have today, it's all about, do we have the right people? And can you, can I help the people to answer those questions or ask you to go through this process? Because I do that every day. Now, and sometimes people misunderstand what I'm trying to say, but it's okay. So, we agree to disagree, or you may not agree, you may misunderstand, but I think, what we also realize is that there has to be some, we have to repeat what we are actually trying to do, because I learned that from our provider meetings for HECO. If this setting is not going to be the setting where you are going to exactly understand what I'm going through, unless we repeat this so many times in different settings, it's not going to get there. So, from that point, what I'd like to do is, take this and see if you can, if you feel like you're part of the system. Okay? Now, you know, because this is kind of my time now, what I want from each one is to ask yourself, what was, when was the last time you promoted the organization that you were in? Okay? So, like, for example, like, even though I'm not employed by Prius, but we have a partnership on the surgery center. Every time I see patients that is highly AMI in any setting, I do want to reach out to them. I don't, but I do want to reach out to them. So, why? Because, one, I do want to help the patient, because not everyone understands what bariatric surgery is. But also, I want to help our business. We have a business in that. I have a client, I have a partner in this. So, if I see a person who doesn't have a primary care position, I do want to tell them, look, you should see one of our practices. So, that's kind of like, because this is not like you, they, and like us, or you and me, or we are all together. So, if that works in that way, like the way that you, if you work it, if you feel like you're part of this, you're an owner of this, then that's the only way that it's going to work, because if you don't promote your organization, there is a disconnect. That's where you kind of need to process this again. So, I'd like to make sure that I can provide this to you in so many different ways, so that if we need to set up smaller groups of meetings, what it is that we are trying to say, if there are different tools that we can use, so that we can understand and be on the same page. Now, what I believe, the other thing is, if, again, let's, I'm going to give a couple examples. If you are a medical account rep for the AR, and if you tell the patient to use the online payment system that we have for the savings, and if you haven't used it, if you don't have any user experience, you're not going to be able to explain that to them. So, you're on the phone, your phone will be different, you are not, you don't believe in what it is, then at the end of it, it won't be believable. I'm not saying that it's, it's all about like you have to be using it, but if we have a system in place, we have to be, in order to explain this best to the patients and the clients. Now, if, again, if I'm the checkout person, if I haven't used the patient portal, how am I going to tell them to use the patient portal and how to, how am I going to explain that? Now, John went through this new Apple, counseling with the Apple, new application with Apple. Well, if you haven't used the patient portal, that's not going to make any sense to you. So therefore, we won't be able to tell the patient how that's going to be. Are we agreeing on this? Right? So, I, as a, as a CEO of this organization, I do all of those things. Like, deliberately, I don't pay my copay sometimes so that I can get a safety, so that when I get a safety, I can actually use online payment, so that I can see how easy it is. It can, is it, can it be improved? Can it be better? Patient portal, I do put messages, if necessary, if a patient is here, he can tell you, I send messages, so that I can see how easily it can be used. So, that's one of the, I think, one of, at least this is my urge, for all of our employees to be part of what we are doing, at the level that we are providing for the, from the end user standpoint. Now, I'm going to give you a couple of examples. We'll come back to that. And I apologize for the screen again, when you do your survey, my team, don't be so mean about the screen. I got it, it's small, you can read it. We're going to change it. So, here's what I would like to tell you, what happened to me just recently. So, December 2018, I got my physical exam, and then my lab work was given to me, and I'm, I'm a really bad patient, I'm one of those patients who don't, who don't follow the instructions, and I have to do the lab work now. So, where our offices, in the next building, there's a, there's a lab, or I'm going to use the name, LabCorp is right there. So, all I need to do is remember not to eat in the morning or drink, so that I can get my blood work done. Right? Now, this is kind of how, since February, Buddy, everyone knows him, got five blood work. Is it right? Maybe more? Like, right on the dot. He got on the time that he needed to get it. Right? You know, I'm a great parent from that point. Horrible patient, because I still don't have my blood work done. And I'll tell you why it wasn't done. So, now, you may understand this, not, I'm going to share with you, hopefully. This will make it more relatable to what I'm saying. So, I'm at LabCorp, so I go there. It's 9:45, like, the way that I start my day, these last 12 months, usually I'm on the pace time with the Turkey office before I leave the office, and throughout the time that I'm in the, in our office. So, well, I got to LabCorp office at Backstreet. First, I was just standing at the front, front window, and they just don't recognize me, they don't notice me. So, I'm like, okay. So, then all of a sudden, I saw this self-check-in kiosk. So, those things do stand a little bit. So, if I don't know, like, I don't want to be intimidated in public, because what, what I do is, like, in the setting that I am doing it, I do it at the best level that I can. So, if I'm going to be challenged with something that I don't know, I don't want to be embarrassed, so I'm just being open with you. So, I don't want to use it. Right? Now, I have to use it, and then all of a sudden, this really, well, elderly patient payment, and she's trying to check her a copy. So, when I'm there, I see it in several different, from several different points. One is, okay, well, I'm a patient, but I'm also a healthcare executive, and it's one of our partners, LabCorp. We do have a partnership with LabCorp. So, then, it's right there. So, what happens is, I, all of a sudden, like, and the reason I'm actually telling you this, this part with elderly patients, I wasn't in a bad mood. It's not like, it's 9:45, I was hungry, I was passionate for the blood work. That's true, but I wasn't in a bad mood, because I actually wanted to help the patient, which I did. One of the reasons I was helping, I wanted to kind of learn how it works, so that I can check myself in. So, okay, then I checked her in, she's so happy, 1944 was born in. So then, I checked myself in. As I'm reading, there's still no one acknowledging me. So then, another patient came, and then, believe it or not, she was born in 1944, like, both of them. I helped that patient in, because they were having difficulties. So, what I'm going through with this one is, like, Southside family, for example, they have this self-check-in kiosk through Turner, they didn't go live yet. I see how difficult for a patient, especially elderly patients, to use this. Right? So, like, we have offices, we want to have something like this in our offices, but if every patient needs a CEO to check them in, it's going to be tough. Right? It's not user-friendly. So, then, fine, they actually got me in, and then they still need to do some business office services. I think she was a technician. She said, I need to sign this paper, because I owe $400. I will potentially owe $400. I said, well, why would I owe anything? Because I have an insurance. Well, your insurance is outdated, expired. I'm like, well, I have a new one. So, now, I give the new insurance, Laura brought my insurance ID, because she didn't want to take the information without seeing the ID, didn't want to go to Navnet. I tell her, go to Navnet, and then put my information in, so she doesn't want to do it. So then, what happens? So, I get my insurance card, so she says, now you owe $120 potentially, you need to sign. I said, okay, why do I owe anything? This is my root screen, critical. And if my doctor, my PC didn't give you the right diagnosis, then we'll fix that. My office is right there. I'm still there, I didn't tell her who I was. Now, I'm also there as landlord. Okay? And then, last time, I was there before this one, they were complaining about the building. And I said, I can help them with that. So, like, I thought maybe they kind of knew, but no, these are maybe new people. So, I got so frustrated, yes, but I did. I left. And this is end of February. Where's Dr. Valencia? Is Dr. Valencia here? Okay. I still haven't done my blood work. In case chair coordinators are calling me, they won't get an answer, or positive answer, because I need to remember not to eat in the morning. And with my schedule, it's tough. Even if I don't eat something, I may have a drink, tea or coffee, not, and do that. So, all right, cool. So, then, that's what your impact is, right? So, it's gone. Now, let me tell you what I did. I just need you to remember, United Medical has a business partnership with LabCorp. Okay? So, they spent about $700,000 for the interface that we have, it's a bi-vertical interface. Then, with that, I sent an email to the salesperson from LabCorp and the VP of LabCorp. So then, what happens is, what I'm expecting is, something has to change in that person's life. Not like, I don't want her to lose her job, but I want her to acknowledge that she was wrong, and she can apologize, and that she didn't do that to any of our other patients, these type of patients, that office. Okay? I don't want any of our patients to go through that, that type of experience. Now, I'm thinking, okay, like, this happens to me, what happens to those two people who are born in 1944? Okay? Now, as I, as I was telling this story to, hopefully someone got upset with me, to Mrs. Sebastian, she said, you know what? They were so horrible to me too. So that means there's a problem, chronic problem there, right? My fear is, any of our offices to have a type of issue. So, when you're on the phone, okay, if you don't realize your impact, you don't understand how far we are. So, now what happens with LabCorp, about 12 emails in the first week of March, going back and forth, they still didn't do what I was expecting. I didn't tell them what I was expecting. I thought they would just do what it is. So, just last week, they reached out to us, you know what they're asking? So, Southside wrote their North Sea lab, and then they want to get into that office, can you help us to get in there? I'm like, I don't know. So, maybe it's going to happen anyway. Right? But that, like, that impact is huge. Who did that? Is the CEO of the LabCorp? No. The VP? No. They're still, they're still family, they're trying to do the right thing. Technician, or the checkout person, or the checking person did that. So, that's why I believe in this. Like, when I say, it's not about title or the designation, I fully believe in this. You each have a huge power in terms of your interactions with patients, clients, clients. That's what I needed to feel, why we are doing this, why we are trying to improve the communication, why we are trying to take this to the next level. Okay? So, and if you believe that I'm into this hundred percent, I'm hoping that you would actually understand where I'm coming from, and that we would make the change altogether. Now, I do want to give you one other example, and this is about the part where I said flying wheel concept. What that is, when these three items, three elements, when they get together, passion, being best at what you are doing, and economic, financial drive, then the, because everything that I say, I want you to put this in perspective, and I want to help you with that. So, Dr. Ida explained to you earlier how the classes that we went through at ASC. Now, when we took American Surgery Centers, when we took our American Surgery Center in February 2005, 2015, they weren't doing as much general surgery, in fact, they were doing a few, no bariatric surgery, not treated 23-hour place. So, we wanted to be at a certain level, or we wanted to provide certain, uh... So we wanted to be at a certain level or we wanted to provide certain services in that place so that we can, we can make a difference from our point and also it can help us to search, why did we buy surgery center for so many different reasons? But one of them is financially, we want to be stronger. So we also needed our service to have freedom to go to these places at their, it's Dr. Ireda called up today and I said, open the surgery center on Saturday. I'll open it, right? It means that he's not gonna be able to do that for, when he's at the hospital. Now, when I say this, don't think as like, oh, what, do they have the ego so they wanna open the office on Saturday? No. When we started doing the balloon and B block surgeries, sometimes patients used to come in for IV blood and instead of sending them to a hospital, we opened the office for a couple hours on Saturday and then we helped them. So we wanted to have these flexibilities for our surgeons and for our patients so that they can actually, their experience with us would be at a different level. So now, this flying wheel is when you have these, the common element of these three, the middle part, okay? Remember those three bubbles? So the middle part is what you wanna do when we get to that, we have this flying wheel effect. What does, what does that mean for us is, started the process of changing the surgery center for a general surgery slash bariatric center. And it took a lot of time. It, we started the process in two thousand sixteen and going live with the first bariatric case was April. Now, you need to understand, having a bariatric patient for bariatric surgery is almost like the OB patients, like OB Joanne, then, well, to, in order to have a baby, you need to be pregnant and then have about nine months. So if the OB Joanne practice just opens today, they won't have babies yet because they won't deliver babies just because they need to have patients coming in, signing up. So then they are actually, most likely they are gonna deliver within the next six to nine months. So bariatric surgery is very similar to that. Now, if we didn't have the passion and the knowledge and being best at bariatric and also the financial incentive, we wouldn't do what we did in that two years until the time that we went flying wheel to bariatric. So it takes so much to get to a point where even if you are best at it, even if you have the passion, even if you have the financial drive, it still takes two years to get to that point. So now, when we started, so we're trying to communicate so you're okay? And this way, I mean, I may be exaggerating a little bit. They didn't see this at the level that it was gonna be with the surgery center because we spent, I spent a lot of time there. Now, Dr. Ireda is a surgeon, he's a bariatric surgeon, so he may have different expectations and you may have different expectations from him. But from me, like my full-time job is being the CEO of United Medical, so how much time I can spend at ASC? Now, if those who were here in two thousand sixteen, you may remember, I started all of my days in the surgery center, okay? So I started there, spent a half day, then a night. Now, last three weeks, I haven't been there because it's not stable anymore. So the things can be done remotely before I had to be there all the time. Michael's working now. Before I had to be there every day. So now, April, we had six cases. May, two thousand eighteen, we had five cases. Then went to eleven, somehow went down to nine. It's just fluctuate, goes up and down. We have, as of today, for May, two thousand nineteen, we already have thirty-two confirmed cases scheduled, which means we may have more in the next couple of weeks for May. So that's where we are. So this is what it takes when you have these right elements all together. This is what it takes to get there, to make it. So my point here is, can I actually give you a perspective of what I'm telling you from a broader picture so that you can actually believe in what I'm saying? So, and I'm hoping that with these two examples, that helps you to understand where I'm coming from. Now, we are a little bit in different orders, so one last thing that I'd like to share before we go to your questions. So actually this is, I think you said this, right? Or, wasn't this yours? United Medical is the backbone of private practices in Delaware. So you are part of this and understanding that we have that type of responsibility to the practices. What I suggest to our leadership team and to everyone in this room, the way that I see it, we focus on triplane in the last three, four years. What I realized, and as I'm getting ready for this and trying to understand this better, trying to do it better, I'm like, well, this cannot be just triplane. So there has to be more into this. So triplane is, we're gonna hear this more from our team. That's what we are aiming today. That is adding to the triplane provider position offices and understanding that without them, this is not gonna be possible. So the point of understanding the triplane, if we have, with the team exercise that we did, the updates that we gave you, the contracts that we have, the, you are unique in Delaware and maybe in many other states, but you are unique in Delaware with the ACO contracts that we have today. So that, you have to really understand what that means for us. That means no other network, no other hospital, no other medical organization has what we have. So in that case, we are saying that let's take this to a next level and then focus on the triplane and then shape our triplane and add our physician practices to make, make this better and then understand that we have to provide services and if we are part of the provider offices, we have to be a strong element of that office so that it can all work together with the goal that we are trying to achieve. So that's what I have for you guys today. So what we'll do is, we'll go to questions. Now, again, as we are learning from what we are doing with these Khan Hall events, one is we are asking for you to submit your questions only if you don't feel comfortable in this setting to ask those questions. So we received about thirty-five responses and then trying to answer some of those in different groups. HR is already given to you in the printout that you have. Now, some of them are frequently asked questions, so we don't wanna change that. We don't wanna just repeat that again. Only if you have questions specific to HR, if it's not covered in the printouts, we can actually discuss those. But the questions that we have, so apparently you were not able to hear me. So no one was listening then. So the questions, we are gonna go through the questions that you have. If, again, if the, in the flyer you can't find them, you can tell me. So what time is it?
Four fifty-eight. Four fifty-eight.
Four fifty-eight. So we have, now again, I'm sure we are gonna say, I can only see the responses, the survey, monkey responses for the post-event. We didn't have enough time for questions. Now, the reason we are doing this twice a year, so then we would make the changes and then maybe change the format for the next meeting and then that may be less presentation than more on Q and A. But I did work with the team and then try to answer these questions. So we got some questions on Turkey. Last time, this was a very popular topic. The percentage of the employees at Baxford's, Bax billing to the Turkey office. So right now, we have twenty-eight AR people in thirty, total of thirty-two employees. I believe they are doing fifty-five percent of the AR work today. We are hiring more. We also have care coordinators, care managers, as Donna mentioned in her update. So we have those individuals and we are also trying to improve, increase the number in that team. But right now, I would say about fifty-five percent of the AR work is done in Turkey office. So I love this question when, last time, I was trying to say that we were, we did not replace anyone. Like when I say, when I hear the, when I read the replacement, I take that as, there was a person, we terminate that person and hire someone. We have not done that. So we hired twenty-eight total people and none of those people were hired at the cost of someone here. So we were having difficulties with hiring process here and then we took the advantage of us having connections there and then build that office. But are we going to replace? No, replace the payment posting? The answer is no. But now, when we get five decent-sized clients, if we need to hire more people, are we gonna hire more people for payment posting? The answer is yes. So, but it shouldn't be, and I said this last time as well, there shouldn't be any concern of anyone feeling, as long as you do your job. No one in the last twelve months were fired and replaced. So you can challenge me on that if you feel differently, but that never happened. So the other, I think we kind of explained the future plans for the United Medical and United Medical LLC, United Medical Clinic, for what the future plans are. And I believe this part is covered with, with our updates. Now, I can stop here and then ask you, well, let me finish what we have. So if you still have questions, we'll take, if you have different questions, we'll take those. So on the billing side, is the US location of the billing department is a call center? So we kind of actually took the question as it is, as this, from the survey monkey. So I think Rich went through this on her update. Daily phone calls that we have is about seven point six calls per employee in the billing department. And also, we are trying to promote the online inquiry for the patients. Actually, in fact, we made some changes yesterday with Muriel and Richa. We need to, we need to actually promote this with the patients so that we don't get actual phone calls if they can be done through our online portal. Or like, I'm talking, actually, I'm talking about the QuickBase portal. So, and we are getting quite a bit where Turkey team actually is helping with those questions with the patients. So, that's kind of like on the billing side. The future of ACO, I believe Anthony went through this and then in the other department updates, we had this. So our goal is to increase the number of patients that we are covering today, number of practices that we have under the ACO contract, which actually has the, will have the same impact. Like if we have more practices, we'll have more patients to cover. And take this to a different level of value-based contract and being able to take, being able to have direct contracting with the assurances. And I believe right now, state of Delaware is studying this with us. And even for Medicare in the future, it's gonna be, it's gonna happen. But these won't be happening unless we have enough experience under these ACO contracts. So all of these contracts are gonna go through, they're gonna go through certain process where we have to be mature enough to take the risk. So in order for us to get to that, it's gonna require at least two to four years, but we are, we are working on that, on that direction. So, and next for ASC, and if we are hiring OR nurse, we have so many nurses at ASC. I know this was a problem maybe eighteen months ago or it's now maybe two years. So, but we are still hiring as different positions may be needed. So for the future of ASC, we are nowhere close to be maxing what we do on the general surgery and bariatric side. We also work with different ophthalmologists to bring them in. And once we max out what we do here, we may need to open another one in Dover. And actually, one of the questions related to this was, when are we buying St. Francis? I think this was a question was posted. So, so the idea is not buying St. Francis, but idea is being able to function at the level that small hospital is. So our ASC at the last survey that we had from NBS AQIP, this is the National Surgical Accreditation Office. The term that they use for us is highly functioning, it's almost like a highly functioning hospital. So that's what we do there. And we, the next level of that would be different partnerships with other organizations and this would include St. Francis and others. Well, Dr. Ireda was at Salem Hospital today. That's actually a little bit easier to buy. So, but we are, we are working on different options to see what can be done. But our goal is not to own a hospital. Our goal is to provide what hospital is able to provide at the level that we can from our side. So, no, we didn't give up on the idea of getting there. So those, these were the questions that I kind of saw and group, other than the HR-related questions. Now, we'll, we'll take your questions if you have any. So when we did the meeting in the morning, there were so many questions in the, right before the noon. So I guess everyone wants to go home, so am I, yes. There is a question, yes.
I just wondered, have we ever taken a look at like our pediatric population in that work space? Because I just feel like with Nemours being here and the pediatric population being served at that hospital, that we could cut costs a lot for that population. I was just wondering, has that been a whole or has that ever been researched?
So, have we ever looked at the population just for pediatric? The answer is no, because the way that we look at it, it's part of our population. But if you ask me this question from United Medical Clinic side, we didn't wanna hire just one pediatrician for Baxford's office. However, when we had Serena join us, there are two of them already, so there's some economy of scale. So, because if you have one pediatric now, everyone in that practice has to cover those patients and we have some difficulties covering kids if not everyone wants to do. Because like Dr. Valencia is our internal medicine, so they don't see patients who are under, I believe, sixteen. So if we lose our economy of scale, then it becomes more difficult. But I think what, what I see, now there also are tenants in that office. Well, if there was a practice in Newcastle which are pediatric, we may actually be more willing to take them on than just hiring one or two pediatricians. I don't know if this answered the question. A little bit more?
It answers the question. I just be interested in us discussing it further.
Okay. Other questions? Other questions? There's one in the back.
I just wanted to ask if there was any way we can have out for Creos and we do a lot of scheduling together in United Medical. But it seems to be like we're told to schedule differently than they were. So I was just wondering if there was any way we can collaborate meetings together? So they were all on the same page.
So to repeat the question you were asking, if there can be, if we can have more interaction between Creos and United Medical Clinic team?
Yes.
Yes, the answer is yes. So well, we can, we can improve that interaction. Right now, we do have certain interactions in terms of my daily interaction with the Creos team. And then Creos, two of the directors at Creos, they come to our department meeting. But I do agree with you that it's not enough. Especially when we were getting for this meeting, we're getting ready for this meeting. I had personally, I had difficulties to make sure that, you know, well, it shouldn't feel too artificial for Creos or the Surgery Center or the UMC to be here. So and from that point, I think we do need to improve that so that we can actually have more interactions between these groups. And lunch and learn activities is one way of doing it, but that's still happening at an internal level. But I think we'll take that and then see what we can do and in what forms we can actually make that better. I definitely do believe that there's an opportunity. Thank you. All right, another question.
Hi, I was wondering if anyone remembers that Monday was birthday? I was wondering if we could have looked into recycling within your organization? A lot of waste in different forms, maybe we could start a recycling program?
So at UM Bax Foods, we do recycle in the business office. Now, I do need to ask if, at the clinics, if it's not happening. Is that at the clinics that's not happening?
So there are all of the shredding that gets picked up all over our, this picture, shred big gray bins where you put in the paper.
I really don't like microphones. You know, they've got a gray shred bins. Those all are recycled.
Hazel, are there in the kitchens, are there green recycle for bottles?
No. Okay, we can, we can take care of that. I agree with you, we should be recycling, it's a responsible thing to do. But do understand that our paper is recycled.
Other questions? No one wants to stay, I guess. Yep, there is a question there, Marissa.
This is not a question, but you have not taken your picture with me yet. Please see me outside. Thank you very much.
Okay, she wants to take a picture with you. Don't disappoint her. Other questions? There is one there, yeah?
I just wanted to ask when like we would be getting employee IDs for our building? Because I was, I don't know, clearly we took our pictures and whatever these pictures are done. I just wonder.
The badges that we are talking about? When we are getting badges? When are the badges going to be completed? Five?
Kristin needs to finish up all of the pictures today. And then we're, we're going to submit them tomorrow. And it should be two, three weeks, Marissa?
So I thought Marissa wanted the pictures for the event, so you wanted the pictures for the badges? Okay, so let's, let's make the, let's make the corrections, I didn't actually understand that. So Marissa wants to see if you didn't have your badge picture taken. So please see her, so that kind of answers, answer your question. So if it's done today and submitted tomorrow, it's going to be two, three weeks. Other questions? Okay, that table is, is good.
Hello, this is also about the badges. I was just curious as to what they were used for?
Right.
Just for identification purposes, fucking it now, those kinds of things?
So what's the purpose of the badge? I'll tell you, like for me personally, I do like to know my employees' names. And then with the way that we are right now and then how big this group, there, there's probably more than two hundred and twenty people in this room. And I'm not going to lie to you, I don't know everyone's first name. So now, we are not doing it because of me though. We are doing it for patients to know who they are talking to. We are also doing it for security reasons too, because sometime I see employees coming in, people coming in, and I don't know if they are employees or not. And I don't know if you do, because especially your department, so you guys do work late on the payment posting. So if someone is still there or someone is coming in because they see the door open and some other stuff, like I need to make sure that you are safe. So this should identify those individuals that they are part of this organization. So I think it's going to help for the from that point, as, as far as just also getting to know people better. And then one thing actually is interesting. I do send twenty surveys every week. And Wilson, my wonderful assistant. And we started actually more than a year ago for ASC. So we have the special envelope, the special cards. It's really nicely done so that patients feel kind of guilty to send them back. So it's already prepaid. And when we get these responses, you would be amazed how good they are with naming the individuals that they dealt with. They remember, like the way that they remember, I know at ASC, they, everyone had badges. And it's really nice to see that from the patient, that they can actually remember that. And I think that also puts some responsibility on the individuals when they know that they are when they deal with patients, their name can be remembered. Because I do want to remember that technician's name at lab, lab work, so I don't know what her name was. So but we do that for ASC. And then because we had a good return for ASC, we started that with with the help of Luke and Ethan. So we do it for Creos and United Medical Clinic. So every week, we send sixty surveys out. And then I do see the results already. How they're actually and patients do pay attention to that too. So again, it's also helpful from that point. Other questions? So now I, I have a question. So when we do this event, we try to, we try different things. So we try to change it a little bit. Randy Monson used to be a good friend of mine, but I don't think he loves me anymore because of these events. So because we change a lot of stuff. That's just, it's a joke, I think he still loves me. So when we make these changes, we make it to see, to try, like if this is going to be better, it's going to work better for us, for others. Doing this in the afternoon, do you feel it's better? Or do you rather just want to have it in the AM? Like if you can just raise your hands, who wants to do it in the AM versus? Only one person or two people want to do it? Okay, so who wants to do it in the afternoon? Good, okay, we'll keep it in the afternoon. I mean, one of the reason we did it in the afternoon was ASC and Creos at UMC, they can actually block their schedule and then not to go back, not to be back to this clinics. So that was kind of to make it work, but I'm glad to see that you feel like this is better in the afternoon. All right, so I don't have any other questions, if you don't. Okay, there is one here. I can, I can, I can repeat if you would like to say. Oh, you want to have the mic?
Yeah.
Okay, she wants to have the mic.
Okay, so I work in the care coordination department and we have all these boxes for people who scan. Sometimes it is distracting, I feel like, so when we walk and walk into them and everyone people come, they always, we either pick them up and bring them against the cubicle. So I feel like they are distracting a little bit. So is there somewhere else that we can put those boxes? I know we have two boxes back there, I get come on a Saturday to work, to organize all that. But I feel like there's so much box in there, it gets distracting at the point.
Okay, so it's more like a concern that you have that we have so many boxes in the care coordination department. And I do agree actually. Who left the office with me? I think it was Christine Abrams, I don't know where she is. So remember, I was taking the pictures of those big boxes? So it actually, it was last week. I'm like, okay, so we have so many boxes again. So they were from Serena. So and I wanted to kind of find out what our plan was. But I agree with you that we should be looking into that. So we'll take that and then see what can be done sooner, because I know it needs, it's going to be scanned. But if we can expedite that, that would be, that would be good. All right, there was one here, yes?
My question was, I guess, there's two of them. So one is, are we going to have uniforms? Is the United Medical, I guess, the building office, are we going to have uniforms, some type of form?
For the building office? Uniforms? No. So I don't believe in uniforms in the business office, but I do also believe in uniforms in the clinic.
So I guess addressed in the United Medical Human Resource frequently asked questions in that pamphlet, that actually was a question that was asked and is addressed in there.
So in the business office, the uniform is going to be, it's going to be difficult.
Okay, so I guess my question is that I do see a lot of people walking around with a United Medical polo. Is there a way for them to escape? Or if you have to earn those shirts, I just wonder. Or is it just for the people who goes outside or?
Okay, Susan wants to ask, yes.
Yes, there most certainly is a way that you could earn one of those shirts. We actually, so we originally, we purchased those shirts to give them to individuals that actually leave our building and go to client sites so that they're easily identified as coming from United Medical to provide safety to those client sites. But in addition to that, we have been giving them out when people exhibit these core values. And we have, we have done that and it, and it is a really great way to earn one.
So now I can only, you know, I do want to pick up the piece from the reaction to the earn. When we say earn, we are really looking for people to do something simple to be, to be able to demonstrate something that they do beyond what they are doing. So you don't need to earn it to, you know, do ten pushups and, you know, twenty mile runs. So it's really, we do want to recognize certain things on the spot. And that's what that earn is. Sometime when Susan said it's more formal, when I say it's a little bit softer maybe. So, but the idea is same. So we are not saying that all about you have to earn this. Demonstrate some, so that we can recognize you on the spot. So we do want to do that. Like these are all done, the ideas were from us. We wanted to actually, because you having that is, you are promoting in a way that the company that you are working for. So but I think that's what, what we are trying to say, if we can recognize people on the spot and then this is one way of doing it for us. And then we would like to recognize more people from that point. Seminar? So the retreats are, the partner retreats, we are actually, the way that we did this event, now it's twice a year. So and then the lunch and learns did replace the purpose of some of those retreats. Can we do more activities? I think it's similar to what Janet was saying from Creos. Can we have more interactions with these teams? Absolutely. We just need to find ways to make that meaningful. Not necessarily just the way of the retreat, but more about like what, how it can be more meaningful for us. We are going to look into different ways to do that. All right, any other questions? I know it's a time.
And if there's no other questions, we do just want to remind everybody to make sure you sign out with the time that you're leaving on the sign out sheet so that HR can put the time in for you.
Okay, so we are going to send a post survey event. You can be as mean as possible, it's okay. I read them one by one. But we really want to use them to make these events better next time. So give me, give us more constructive ways to make this better. Show us how, tell us how, and I'll make sure that we address those individuals. Thank you so much again, and I will see you in six months.